Well, thank.
Hey, thank you, Lauren. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. It is April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five, and this is the Anna Reynolds School of Project Building Committee. And Lauren, you want to do the roll call?
Steve Woods?
Here.
Brittany Carr?
Here.
Dave Nagel?
Here.
And Jeremy Wetzel?
Here.
That's your quorum.
Thank you. Public participation is our next item. There is no one. We didn't get on. The next item is take action on prior meeting minutes. We have one meeting of March twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. If someone would like to move those minutes.
Don't move.
Thank you, Dave. In a second.
Second.
Thank you, Brittany. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is architects update. Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good evening. So just a very brief report. We are still reviewing some mechanical closeout documents to get that back to to Newfield and the contractor. And also, our engineers are currently reviewing some questions about condensate piping. So those are the two active things going on. And we still will be visiting the site. Brennan White, our landscape architect, will be out there to visit soon to check on plantings and see how things are going out there to see if lawns are established and trees have made it, that kind of thing, to do an assessment. So that's where.
Jeffrey, you let me know when that happens. I'd like to meet Brennan out there. Okay?
Definitely.
Thank you. Any questions for Jennifer? Okay, we'll move on. Owners, project manager update and financial update, both Eileen's.
Hi, everyone. Hi. Hope everyone's doing well. There's not too much to update. Doing the financial in the background here. And then trying to keep up with the paperwork on the extra additional projects that we've added on here. So we'll go over a few of those. I have some invoices. I have been checking in with Jennifer and Rich just to make sure that closeouts moving along and the things that need to be finalized are happening. I had done a check with Rich on the landscaping last week. So Jennifer just touched on that. Otherwise, does anyone have any questions before I jump into the financial?
See no hands. Eileen?
Let me share my scope. All right, can everyone see this all right?
I think it'd be better to pull it up a little bit. At least for my old eyes. You just go to full screen. That might do it, though. Yeah, that's better.
Yeah, it's it's this. It's the zoom at the bottom. All right, so here I'm going to show you. This is where the additional work was added. And then I have a few invoices that came in. So we've still got. Oh, that's not right. That's. Okay, that that's what we we need to have invoices hit against for all of these projects. And most of the purchase orders are done. All right, so for owner contingency currently with the courtyard in there and the baseball fields, all that, it's one twenty eight forty nine thirty six is where we're currently at. We're almost done with everything else. The commissioning agent, we're waiting for completion. This is where all the other costs are for the projects. Nearly complete. I do have an invoice for this. Waiting for possibly another one there. And then new this is new field here. So we're ninety five percent complete. So budget wise, we're on track here. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't see anybody's hand up. So we'll move on. Thank you.
Yep.
Our next is construction managers update. Rich?
Yep. So we've been continuing with the the financial and the other paperwork on the closeout side, working with KBA and RZ on that for mostly the mechanical items right now. And over this April break, we had the mechanical contractor on site on Monday and Tuesday. There was some control wires that were missing, part of the design, but weren't installed at the original time of construction. So those were added. We're just coordinating for a final data drop to get that hooked up and get some of those split systems, which are the ceiling mounted cassettes that feed the vestibules and a few hallway locations. So those can show up on the BMS system and be monitored and controlled. So that hookup is nearly complete, really just waiting on the data drop that we need to coordinate with with Craig. So we're working on that. And then again, looking at the the site work, the the grass is starting to come in over there. So there's some spots I know we're going to need to put down a little bit more seed. I think some seed got washed away back in the fall when it was seeded. So we'll we'll take care of that, make sure that comes in this this spring. So all in all, in in real, real close to completion on everything on the paperwork side and out in the field. So we're almost there.
Any questions for Rich? I don't see anybody's hand going up. I actually had the opportunity, Rich, to go up there once the Friday. I was up there Tuesday. Actually, the exterior of the building looks good. Most I didn't go in the courtyard because the building was locked. But all of the all the trees appear to be live. The grass is filling in pretty good. I would agree with the lay down area, and I didn't get to see the courtyard, but there's some areas that still need a little bit of work. In all fairness to the contractor, we're way below soil temperature here. So our grass is not jumping out of the ground yet. Hopefully, next week, we'll bring some warm weather and we get soil temperatures where they should be, and then it'll really start to take shape. But all in all, again, the exterior of the site all look pretty good.
And TC Landscape was there on Monday as well, doing some fertilizing.
Okay, good. Good. That's an important component to this to get it to go.
And Rich said there was buds on the tree in the courtyard.
Okay. I just hope it's full of buds.
And we'll see over the next couple of weeks. That should be the.
Yeah.
No.
Jury's out on the courtyard trees for me, but we'll see. I hope I hope I'm proved wrong. I really do. And Rich, do you think by the end of next week, commissioning will be done?
I just need to hear back on when we're going to get that final hookup. So Jason Plum, I know I was speaking with Mike Cagle from Action Air, and you guys obviously have a relationship with the service contracts that they do for the rest of the town. So I believe he was going to reach out to you. I don't know if he's done that yet.
He did. We spoke today. So he asked me about three things. He asked me about control wiring between the water, hot water heaters, domestic hot water and the controls. He asked me about control wiring between the these ceiling cassette units that you spoke of earlier. And he asked me about IP address for the the connection of those units to the internet in there through our our network. So what I told him is I believe that the the control wiring in both scenarios would be on the project. I think that's something that we'd have to bring the project people back in to run the wiring.
Yep.
And make the connections. Like I offered some assistance. We could go out and confirm whether or not the water heater seems like we could see it in the past. So I have a feeling it's in place. It just got disconnected, didn't get reconnected through the water heater replacement. And I said we could help with the IP address.
Yeah, and and that controls wiring is getting done by through Action Air ABS doing the wiring. So that won't be an issue. I think the bigger part is just like the data drop and the IP address. So we can touch base with Mike again on Monday and and make sure we keep that going.
Great.
Yeah. So usually Carla Craig's work colleague, he does the IP addresses.
Yeah. And what I asked him for is ask me in a technical way, something that I can forward to Craig or copy Craig on it, because I don't speak some of that language. So we'll see what he comes up with. He's going to send it to me on email.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it looks like the end is is coming close. So hopefully they can wrap that up in the next week to two week stops and we can finally really finalize our closeout, really start to button this project up. It'd be nice.
Yeah.
Been going on a long time. All right, Rich, thank you. Any any questions for Rich? Okay, next is a take action on potential change orders. I don't think we have any, correct?
Uh, no, not for this meeting.
Yeah. Review invoices and take action on those invoices. I know we have one.
I have.
You have some others. You want to share your screen?
I do, yes.
Yeah, I know we have one for IES, which is the commissioning agent. He's billing partial amount on the seventy five hundred dollars. It's work that he's completed. So as long as the committee has no issue. I would like to move forward and approve this for payments. We could do them all at once. Let's show the other.
Sure. So these I sent to you. I thought I sent these to you and Lauren for approval because they're in within your level, and we didn't have a meeting. So four thousand for red thread.
Who's that for?
A furniture invoice of red thread, excuse me. And then our CSG invoice went through at the end, at the end of March after the I don't, we didn't have the last meeting.
Back to the red thread. There's no additional money. It's something we approved earlier. You're just finally getting the invoice. Correct?
Yes. Yeah, it was a
Okay.
Because they didn't send an invoice.
Yeah.
It was a leftover punch list item. So we owe them for four thousand off of a purchase order.
Okay.
So that's six, that's six thousand. And then our invoice went through as well, twenty four nine seventy five.
And yours is, I can't read it, twenty four?
Yes. Nine seventy five. That was for January, February, March.
So thirty thousand nine seventy five, correct? For the three of them.
Correct.
All right. So I entertain a motion that we approve those three invoices in the amount of thirty thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars. Would like to move it.
So. Aye.
Dave and Brittany, for a second. You guys are like right on top of each other. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I've got on this next item, other business person committee a question for you guys. If you remember, we appropriated, I believe the amount was seventy nine thousand five hundred dollars for some ball field work that I that they were going to do. And the the numbers are all coming in. Some of the numbers are a little bit higher. Aqua Blackfoot had a material increase. He was forty five hundred. It is now going to be forty nine hundred. They were looking to add a set of bleachers. I think we might have discussed this at our last meeting. The bleacher is relatively inexpensive. It'd be one thousand nine hundred and four dollars. And the good news is the irrigation system, which was targeted at fifty thousand dollars, is now coming in at thirty thousand dollars. They thought they were going to have to put a meter pit in the ground for the irrigation system, and they don't have to do that. Come out their back over vendor and their water meter on the building. And everybody, MDC is fine with that. So there's a substantial savings. But this is my question. I'd like to make those changes. We will stay below the seventy nine five. But we're going to add in the bleachers to four hundred dollars for Blackfoot. And then I just got this phone call today. The superintendent of Parks and Rec built a mail. They're looking to purchase, or they're looking for us to purchase, a battery powered mower for the courtyard. And it's thirty five hundred dollars. It's something that would stay in the courtyard. It's totally remote controlled or self controlled. It's computer. It runs off a GPS. It has a docking station that it's in turn the day to charge, and it runs through the night. And then when it's done mowing, goes back to its charging station and sits there till the next time it's programmed to mow. It's it's amazing. I personally think we should do it. Lou or Jason obviously could speak to this. We have, when I say we, the town specifically, the board of the bed struggles with the Parks Department to get these courtyards to be maintained. Carol obviously must speak to it too. She worked in that building for a long time. Anything we can do, I think, to help them, and it's a very small amount of money. Lauren, I you didn't even have an opportunity to run this by you yet. I need you to be okay with it too. But if you are okay, we're still way under seventy nine five. There'd be a credit coming back to the project of twelve thousand seven hundred and forty two dollars, give or take a dollar or two. So your thoughts on that? Yes, no?
I'm fine with it.
The mower.
I wish I had one at home.
Yeah. And mows, mows an acre and a quarter on one charge.
Yeah.
So they actually, I believe they demoed it at Anna Reynolds today.
Yeah.
Don't know that for a fact, but I think they did.
Do I do I get to drive this thing with a remote control? Or does it automatic? I mean, like.
No, it's not like that big. You might be.
Actually, it looks like it looks like a push lawnmower without the handle. That's what it looks like. It's got the little little round GPS satellite thing on top to pick up the signal. It's really, it's amazing what they're doing.
What are the so so my only question is, I'm sorry if I'm speaking in a turn like, well, what are the taxpayers going to think of that if we spent four thousand dollars of a project on on this mon mower that is apparently a Roomba for the for the field?
Well, anybody that visits the courtyard, I could tell you that parents of the school would be ecstatic having grass. It's not six or eight or ten or twelve inches tall. Also, it'd be mowed on a regular basis.
I mean, I can probably find a good gas one down at Home Depot for about sixty. No, I'm just kidding. But I mean, I think the commercial units, like, what is a commercial gas unit cost that down, you know, if you go over to you know, Butler's or something like that, that's got to, they can't be, is that four thousand bucks?
No, they're around thousand fifteen hundred dollars, depending on what you get.
Yeah. So I mean, so technically, you could probably get three of those for the class of one of these things.
You could. But the other issue is you got to get in and out of the building, which poses a problem with security with the kids. So and you know, the Parks guys being the guys that they are. Yeah, and they they're going to want to prop a door open. If the door stays open longer than probably five minutes, alarm is going to go off. You know, police are going to get called. It's in again, I I'm in favor of it, but I think it's money well spent, and it will protect the investment that we made in the courtyard. There's nothing worse than seeing grass ten, twelve inches tall, as opposed to three.
Steve, Carol has a question.
Yes, Carol.
No, it's really a comment. As a teacher at the school, there were times, we have a lot of ticks in the area. And when the grass is three, four inches, five inches tall, the kids can't play out there. So for the safety of the kids, I think this is a great idea. Also, the big mowers are coming from the outside in, and those doors have to be kept open for those big mowers to get in there. That's also a safety concern. On Parks and Rec can't get in there when school's in session, whereas they can, they're mowing the outside during school time. So I think it's it's an investment well made, just from a teaching standpoint. And you know, if you can do it during the day, there's something kind of cool for the kids to look at and to learn about and in technology, they're learning about how to program things. So I I I'm all for it.
Anybody else want to chime in?
I'm fine, as long as it's within the confines of the monies we have for the project.
And it definitely is. It's why we thought we already spent.
Jason Plum here with facilities. I'd add that we, Parks does not have access to the doors. So they don't have keys or fobs to get into our building. So we have to have someone there to support them if they're going inside of the building. The plan is to have this thing mow through the night. So it might be interesting to the kids, but I have a perception in my in my head, at least, that I wouldn't want, you know, the possibility of the kids being around the mower when it's operating. It sounds like it can do it any time of the day. It's completely autonomous and neat and clean. And then we have, our custodians have to clean up when you can imagine with the lawnmower going through the building, be it either a push style or a riding lawnmower, it has to go across finished floors and everything. So that's it's more labor by our folks to clean up after they leave, you know, the grass bits from the mowers that have to go through the building. So I I would definitely be for it personally.
Thank you, Jason. Brittany, you have your hand up?
I did. I just had two questions. So the thirty five hundred encompasses the charging station and the mower, correct? And any additional fees, taxes associated with that?
Yeah, well, there's no taxes because it's municipality. But yes, it's inclusive. And I actually was online today, and that's the price, thirty four ninety nine. You guys could check it out later, too, if you want. It's Crest. That's the manufacturer. And they offer, I think it's seven or eight different models. You'll you'll see it on there. Go ahead, Brittany. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No. And my second question, where in the courtyard is it going to be placed? I mean, I'm just thinking of, you know, weather conditions. It's fine that it's outside all throughout the night?
It is definitely fine that it's outside. I don't know where it's going to be placed, Jason, or Lou.
We haven't made that decision yet, but it actually has a little garage that it parks in that protects it from the elements, I believe. It drives itself over and backs into this garage and attaches itself to the charging station. So no concerns. It's it's built for outdoors.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Steve.
Yep.
Clay and Bill sent me a quick little five second video of the gadget in motion. So if I can take control of the screen for a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can, everybody can see it firsthand as far as what this is. So all right, let's see. How do I do that? Just one second, everyone.
Yeah, we actually have a mower that is, it cuts, has a couple of them too, cuts a seventeen foot swath. They're in the process right now, making that autonomous. And it's about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar lawnmower, and it'll just go by itself. It's mind blowing.
Can you see the little orange thing in the grass?
There you go.
Here we go.
That's it. That's exactly.
That's all we got. Five seconds of a video. But that's what it looks like.
Hit go, or did you hit go?
Hit go. Do it again. Okay.
Five seconds, not going to do much.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's not doing much at all. That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
So you can see, I don't know who was standing there taking the picture, but typically, the grass is never at that height in one of our.
Yeah.
And okay, thanks for sharing that, Lou.
Okay, very good. All right.
Anybody else? Lauren, I just need to say, hear from you that you're okay with this because I didn't run a by you.
No, I don't care with that.
Okay.
So then. Steve, if I if I could, can I abstain from the vote?
Yes, you can.
I I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Okay.
It's, I think it's ridiculous. What? I'm sorry. I I just like this. Does everybody know how to use this thing? What if it breaks down? Is there a warranty? I mean, I, it's cute and everything. It's, I mean, I'm I'm an IT guy. I love gadgets more than anyone. And I and I realize the importance of cutting the grass in the courtyard. Certainly, I mean, it's, there's no argument there, but I just, I'm just not feeling it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's common, Jeremy. Just so you know, the town has purchased a robotic line striping machine. So all the athletic fields, no more. No one's walking behind or riding on a machine. Takes a five gallon pail of paint, and it's, this thing is so smart, Jeremy. It knows not to go on wet paint. So it'll paint a line. If let's say it's doing the circle, it'll do one ring in the circle, won't come back to that circle to do the next line until that's dry. How it knows that is beyond me.
Amazing.
It's absolutely amazing.
Okay, so Lauren, do we actually need a motion for this? Because you've already approved the money. We're just kind of moving around. How what are you comfortable with?
I would actually do a motion only because we approved the money to cover irrigation and the infield mix. So I would just say I would just ask for a motion then to reallocate funding for bleachers and the remote controlled mower.
Okay, so entertain a motion that we reallocate four hundred dollars to Aqua Backflow, Aqua Backflow for four hundred dollars. The bleachers for one thousand nine hundred and four dollars. And the robotic mower from Crest at thirty five hundred dollars for the motion that we previously approved for athletic field improvements. Is that good enough, Lauren?
Yep.
Okay, so who would like to move it?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Carol. In a second. I'll second if nobody wants to. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'm aye. Brittany?
Aye.
Is that four? Yeah, one, two, three, four. Against and abstain, abstentions, one, correct? Jeremy?
Yeah, that's correct.
Four to one with one abstention.
Thank you. Sorry, I hurt your head with this one.
Sorry, guys. I just.
Well, I I get it. Some things are hard to swallow. It is.
And that one, we can buy three mowers, and if we get a little glass, grass flippings in the hallway, I think we can handle that. You know? Sorry, I I've said my piece, but thank you.
Yeah, you made your point.
So the next item is public participation, and I'm sure we have no one there?
No one.
Okay. Comments by members? Last opportunity, Jerry, but Jeremy, but I think you you've exhausted it. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. All those in favor signify by. Thank you, Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Have a good day, Warren.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, have a nice Easter weekend.
Yeah, have a good holiday.
You too.